Welcome, everyone. We had a little technical difficulty. Meeting is called to order. Crystal, do we have a quorum, please?
Mayor Doyle Moss present, Councilmember Contreras present, Councilmember Gillian absent, Councilmember Rennenbaum present, Mayor Pro Tim Lee Young present, and Councilmember Kreml present. Mayor?
Thank you. Would you all stand, please, for a moment of silence? And then, please, join me in the pledge. Thank you. Join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Could I get Jim and Pat Martin to come up, please?
Every city should have a Jim Martin. In my years of living, I've known a handful of guys that are generous with their time and their resources. I mean, a handful of guys in all my life. And Jim Martin is one of those guys. And Willow Park is very fortunate to have him. Jim Martin has been a vital part of the Willow Park community for more than 30 years since he began working in Willow Park in 1989. Jim Martin was instrumental in the development of our city, including connecting Water and Sewer to the Squaw Creek Gowns Trinity Meadows Racetrack, which is now the home of the Willow Park North Development. Jim Martin bought, developed, deployed utilities, and sold over 200 acres, now known as Crown Point, supporting retail, medical office buildings, surgical centers, senior living facilities, Texas Health Neighborhood Care and Wellness, and the new home and campus of the Willow Park Baptist Church. Jim Martin has been involved in numerous other projects throughout the city that have allowed Willow Park to grow and thrive in the past 30 years. Jim Martin and his wife, Pat, are enthusiastic supporters of all things related to the city, including being contributors to our first responders and nonprofits. The City of Willow Park recognizes Jim Martin as an indispensable factor in our community and thanks him for all his work. Now, I, Mayor Doyle Moss, in appreciation of Jim Martin's devotion and service to the city of Willow Park, create this permanent record of gratitude for his community service. Would you join me in a pledge?
You know, I can't really say that I've been as good to Willow Park this season of May because I came here in 1989 to build a tourney racetrack and wound up being instrumental in helping build Willow Park Baptist Church. Looking out there in the crowd, some of best friends, people I truly have a lot of fondness for. Y'all knew, y'all were... I had no idea. I called Pat, told her I had to go to a council meeting. And, you know, after about a thousand of these, Joe, you know, boy, she's like, well, I only have suffered. I tried to keep my weight up, but I appreciate this. I just, I don't know what to say.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
I've been in a thousand meetings with Jim Martin. I haven't ever heard him speechless.
Isn't that the truth? Crystal, do we have any public comments?
No, sir, we do not.
Give them a second. A lot of fun out there. Our first item on the agenda is to approve the city council minutes of the October 25, 2022 meeting. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes dated October 25, 2022.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Thank you. We have a public hearing to consider special use permit regarding a request to add boat dealership sales as an allowable use for Lot 3 Block 1 Porter Edition. Currently zoned as commercial I-20 overlay district in the city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Our public hearing will open at 6:08 PM. Are there any comments? We'll close the public hearing at 6:09 PM. Item number four, to consider a special use permit regarding a request to add a boat dealership sales service as an allowable use for Lot 3 Block 1 in the Porter Edition, currently zoned as commercial I-20 overlay district in the city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Tony?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is for a special use permit for the allowable use construction for the boat dealership for sales and service on the property. The attachment that is in your packet has the layout for the site plan of what they're expecting to do and also the elevations for what the materials and that is going to look like for those buildings. They are included with this is our ordinance has the first building can be 50 feet, the second building can be 25 feet. In accepting this, we're also transposing that. So you'll see the boat tower. That's actually their secondary building, and that's going to be under 50 feet. And then the primary building will be the 25. So Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval of the special use permit and transposing of the height requirements for the primary building and the storage tower. We do have the boat dealership representatives here. Do you have any questions?
So it's just one tower, correct?
Yes.
Why did this come in as a special use permit?
It's a commercial, and commercial doesn't allow boat sales and service for underuses for our works.
Okay, any other questions for Tony? Or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve of the special use permit to add a boat dealership sales service as an allowable use for Lot 3 Block 1 in the Porter Edition.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Item number five, to consider a request by Basic Development LLC to abandon a 0.36 acre right of way of Bankhead Highway adjacent to Lot 3 Block 1 Porter Edition in the city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Betty?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. In April of 2021, there was right of way that was dedicated as a part of the Porter Edition, and it was for the extension of Bankhead Highway. And we abandoned the old stagecoach right of way that went through there. Subsequent to that, we further extended Bankhead to the west. And also, we platted Eagle Drive, which is the north-south street that comes in there. So we actually have some residual right of way that we do not need. So the proposal is to dedicate that, abandon it and dedicate it back to the owner of Lot 3 Block 1, which is the lot you just considered for the special exception and special use permit. You have in your packet the property owner's letter with the request. You have the survey exhibit. And if you concur with our recommendation, you have the ordinance which would basically give the property back to the property owner. And they will come back with a replat to incorporate that into Lot 3.
Question. Would they, I guess, giving the surplus up, would we need any of it for potential expansion of Bankhead Highway or expansion of Eagle Drive?
No, both of those are 60-foot rights of way, and they are collector streets, which will handle the traffic for that.
Perfect.
So this is part of the boat dealership?
Yes, it will be incorporated into that lot.
Okay. Any other questions for Betty? Or do we have a motion, please?
Do we need the caption read?
Okay, my speaker voice on. An ordinance abandoning that certain 0.36, certain that 0.36 acre Bankhead Highway right of way adjacent to Lot 3 Block 1 Porter Edition, providing for the terms and conditions of abandonment, providing for an effective date.
Okay, do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance and recommendation of the city council to vacate and abandon right of way property as presented and replat said property.
Okay, thank you, Lee. Any other questions or discussion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Thank you. Item number six, to consider a preliminary plat for lots 1 through 5 of 29.99 acres, David Addington Survey Abstract Number 21 in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city of Willow Park, Parker County, Texas. Tony?
We have this parcel, which is going from one contiguous parcel into lots, five lots for this. It is in our ATJ, but it is required that the city review the plats, even in our ATJ, to make sure they're compliant with our ordinances. We have taken this to Planning and Zoning Commission, and they have approved it with the conditions that the structures, the driveway and the well on Lot Number 2 was shown, and that the septic was shown on Lot 1. And those conditions have been met. So what you're looking at in your plat is the corrected preliminary. Excuse me, in the packet is preliminary plat that's corrected. And so what you're reviewing is what's to be approved.
And the planning is on and approved this?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, any questions for Tony? Or do we have a motion, please?
Does this have water or sewer?
It has access to both. They're not requesting it at this time, but that Lot Number 2 has inquired about it. They just haven't applied for it yet.
Any other questions? Or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve the subject preliminary plat with conditions as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Item number seven, to approve the city's fourth quarter financial report. Mr. Weber?
Good evening. So I will first kind of start and look and compare. I want to, again, highlight some items. I'm going to show you or review as, you know, how the year played out compared to budget and also compared to last year. So again, as we always do, looking at our three main funds, water, general, and wastewater. So starting with general, with the revenue side, surplus $342,000 this year, cash increase of about $452,000. And when I looked at over a two-year span or just our operating cash within our general fund, we're up about $910,000. So that shows you the last two years, general fund have really kind of taken off. You know, I don't know if some of y'all remember, you know, three, four years ago, general fund was just kind of hanging on. And we were, there's, in the budget, you know, potential transfers just to keep that operating. So it wasn't a deficit. So that has really taken off. And the two main drivers, which we've discussed in the past, your M&amp;O tax was up $374,000, and your sales tax is up $283,000. So those are your big, you know, revenue drivers in your general fund. Again, not a surprise there, but that's just, you know, for the year, kind of where we ended up on that. Development fees, again, as we've discussed, you're strong there. You're $287,000 over budget on that. You did have some, you know, at the beginning of the year before, we had that all in-house. We were about $76,000 on the expense side over, right? So that offset some of that from a profit standpoint. But still, you still bring in extra on that. A couple of things that came in under court ended up under about $40,000. And then we had budgeted $175,000 in some COVID relief funds in the budget that we just didn't receive. And I don't know, for whatever reason, the reason behind that. But that was just something, again, when you're looking and comparing to budget, wasn't in there. But still, revenue, we're 10% over on our general fund. So again, really strong year on revenue driven by taxes. On the expense side, so personnel costs were up $220,000 last year, but it's right on budget, within 1% of budget. So those were planned expenditures, you know, planned costs, obviously adding personnel, some things there that were done in the general fund budget. So again, we stayed on budget on that. In terms of your operating costs, supplies, utilities, contractual, we were up on that. So compared to last year, we're up about $304,000, and we were 106% over budget when you look at those. It was a, I mean, it was a lot of different things. There wasn't just one thing driving that. Obviously, you do have some, you know, the inflation factor. So your fuel, some of your supplies, some of your contractual services were up from what we budgeted, again, from last year. So you're feeling that a little bit. And again, that's just kind of part of the reality that we're in now. But when you look big picture, we're only 2% over budget on the general fund expenses. So we managed some of that in some other areas. We didn't have any real big capital expenditures. We didn't budget any big ones. We also just didn't have anything that came through as a general fund. So that kind of helped you. You didn't have any major impact there. There's some money for the park, things like that, that y'all had approved throughout the year. But other than that, there wasn't anything significant there. So again, big picture, general fund, another strong year driven by your property tax and your sales tax. Looking at the water fund, kind of same thing. So user fees, you're up $215,000, and you're $200,000 over budget. Again, that was more weather-related, right? You had a very dry year this year, so our revenue really started taking up. And we did start to see some more connections. I think that will start, continue, really go up as you're getting more connections to the system. And then our impact fees were $214,000 over budget. So those, you know, obviously, you're getting those upfront, and that's a huge help there. So your overall profit, $344,000 on the water fund. And then, as we look at the cash balances, your water is, from a cash position, is probably strongest. You have a lot, we have a lot of cash in the water fund, which is good because things aren't cheap. Obviously, if you want to do infrastructure improvements, things like that, it gives you some flexibility, especially with current interest rates, where you can maybe pay for some things with cash instead of having to go finance that, you know? So that gives you some, again, some financial flexibility there on the water side. On the expense, just a few things to point out. So personnel cost, right on budget on that. This one was probably your biggest impact. Your operating cost, you were $369,000 over budget and about $476,000 over last year. Couple of the big things, so $145,000 on the water meters. I think that was related to some installations, some extra meters we had. So there's an additional cost there. And then the other big one that, you know, just kind of looking on that is the amount that we paid at Fort Worth was about $230,000. We budgeted 50, but obviously, this was the first year. You didn't know, and you think, well, our revenues increased on the user fees because we were supplying more to the customers. Well, we have to buy more from Fort Worth to do that. So you have some offset there. And I believe when the lift station's done, it will help with maybe some of those costs. I don't know.
The pump station.
Yeah, the pump station, yeah. That may help with some of the cost of Fort Worth. But I know that's something, again, when you're looking and just comparing to budget, that's an additional cost that kind of came into play. We did not have, again, the $240,000 that was budgeted to transfer to wastewater, we did not need to do that. So that's why when you look as a percentage, you're only 5% total expenditures over because those increases were offset by not having to send that money over. And then, real quick on wastewater, so user fees on that were flat. I did notice the last few months, they're, again, they're starting to take up, which we really want to see because we have additional debt in that fund. And, you know, when that was issued, we were under the expectation that the revenue will slowly increase on that over the next two to three years. So I think we're starting to see that, but it's just going to take a little bit of time. And so overall, the user fees were, again, were fairly flat. There was impact fees, you're $100,000 over budget on that. And then we did have, you'll see it on the detail, that grant revenue, $489,000. Essentially, that's that CLF RF money that, from an accounting standpoint, we recognize that as income when those expenses are incurred. So it's just an offset on the books. But that's why there's the 49, is essentially the grant money that was spent on the Bankhead.
Lift station.
Lift station, that's over there. So you're at 87% of budget on revenue. But again, that's, if you take that, the 240 was in that budget line item. So that's why I don't want you to get confused when you see we're that far under. Really, we're over, but that 240 was in the budget. Expenses were right on budget. There really wasn't any, I mean, you were 99% on your expenses. So you're right there. No major unplanned expenditures. Biggest increase is just that you had the new debt of $212,000 up from last year. And then the one thing I would want to point out on this is, you know, we were a deficit of $121,000. But when you look, we have non-restricted reserves in the wastewater at the end of the year of $778,000. So you still have plenty of reserves. So even if it takes another year or two for those connections to come online to pay for that debt, to service that debt, you have a cushion in that fund. And then also, obviously, you have a transfer from the water fund that you could use if you need to as well, again, to help with the debt on the wastewater side. And that was something that we had discussed when all that was coming about. But just want to point that out. And then just cash-wise, if you look at page two, you can kind of see the cash balances. You can see, again, strong cash position. You can kind of look and see some of the increases in the operating accounts. You know, you have some flexibility, again, on some capital projects if you need to, depending on what fund they're going to come out of. But because of some surpluses we've had, you have some reserves that have been built up, specifically, again, general fund and water fund that you can have access to. Any questions on anything?
Not really a question. I just want to point out to council something that me and Candy have discussed over the months, and that's your tourism fund. It's towards the bottom of page two. That fund currently has $212,000 in it, and it's going to only get bigger. The way the tourism fund works, it's the hot tax that you pay at the hotels, which is, this is our portion of the hot tax. It's highly restrictive, and so we're searching for recommendations for you guys to consider on how to spend these funds. It can't be used, you know, in the general fund. So it's, there's, I think, Pat, like nine?
Nine permitted uses.
Yeah. And so, and they're really, you know, Willow Park's kind of in its infancy of tourism and those things. So we're trying to find some things to maybe help, you know, things that we're paying for out of the general fund that maybe we can use out of the hot tax. But I wanted to bring that to your attention because it has almost, well, I guess, over-tripled, maybe quadrupled.
The new hotel.
Is, yeah. That's what's doing it. And so just something to keep your eye on, and that we are internally trying to figure out if there's some costs that we can offset with this. Pat, you said there's nine things we can do with this about? When can we have a list of those nine things?
Well, primarily, it's, first of all, it's advertising, historical preservation, sporting events, all of which have to be coupled with, they put heads in beds. So I've got a, what I'm going to suggest is we set up an application program and form a committee, have a special hot committee that hears these and then brings them back to the council. I think that's a good way to do it. And also, we can get people that want to come and apply for the funds. We can apply for the funds and use them as well. But basically, that'll generate some ideas, I think, of different people wanting to drive these. When there are sporting events or festivals or things like that in the community, there are certainly multi-day events and are advertised to put heads in beds. They meet the criteria, then we can fund them. So I'll have a little memo for council and Brian, and so you can look at those the next meeting.
How long have you been working with the city of Willow Park, Jake?
About five or six years, something like that, I think.
Is this one of the better financial reports you've seen?
Yeah, absolutely. On the, we've had some good years on the water fund in the past. But this is the biggest revenue year by far on any of the funds, specifically general. But yeah, you're starting to see the growth, I would say, really, with the sales tax and also with the new connections, you know, your user charges. Probably it's not slowing down anytime soon.
Pretty good report.
Yeah, yeah. So like I said, y'all are in a really good position. You built up some good reserves last few years. And again, that's, now it gives you that financial flexibility to do some things if you need to.
Okay. Any other questions for Jake? Or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept the financial reports as presented.
Thank you. Eric, do we have a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Jake. Item number eight. Item number eight, to consider the implementation of the STEP impaired driving mobilization safety grant. Jacqueline, you're on.
Mayor and Council, Sergeant Ramirez with the police department. So this is for the STEP IDM, which is the impaired driving mobilization safety grant. This is a smaller grant. It's for waves. So you've got Christmas, New Year's, spring break, Independence Day, or July 4th, and Labor Day. So it's two weeks of enforcement and campaigning. The campaigning part is us just putting out education to the public. It's transparency that we are going to be doing this enforcement. And then on the second page, this is a true 80/20 split. So TechDOT granted us $12,000. To get to the true 80/20, it's a little bit under 12. So the max that the city would pay is $2,991.28 if we were to use all of the TechDOT money, which is $1,965.09. And then on the map that you have, so the purpose of this grant is to reduce our fatal crashes, or serious injury crashes. We've worked at least 120 crashes in Willow Park in 12 months.
How many?
120. And that's a typical number for us. That doesn't include assists that we do all the way to the county line sometimes. We do have fatalities from time to time. So the purpose of this is to enforce traffic safety laws to help reduce that. And then on the map, so TechDOT, I got with TechDOT. They have liaisons that help us. We created that map. That's what's called a hot zone. So we're going to have one zone that they want us to focus enforcement on, which is pretty much our whole three-mile stretch of highway, which includes the service roads and the turnarounds.
Question. So you said you had, you did 120 runs, or?
We've worked 120 crashes in 12 months.
And how much, what was the percentage on the interstate, or interstate-related?
I'd be lying if I gave you a number, because I don't have that percentage, but I can say that that is majority. We do work some in the city, but pretty much 95-plus is on the highway. Speed is usually a factor, if not, it's DWIs.
Okay.
So the city match is $2,991?
Up to, yes, sir. So if we don't use the 80% that TechDOT is granting us, so let's say we use 10,000, the city will pay to 20% of that.
Okay.
So that, the max is 2,900.
Up to that amount?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. And these are just during these periods of time, right?
Yes, sir. During what they call waves.
Okay. Very good. Okay. Do we have any questions, or do we have a motion, please?
I have an additional question. So it's the education part of it to the community, and then after that, is there an implementation where, like, we're out stopping folks?
Yes, sir.
Or, okay.
That is part of, that's what it is.
So is it like a stop point where people are driving through, or what, can you describe that? Like, what is like?
What do you mean stop point?
Like, we're, I guess, a checkpoint?
No checkpoints.
Okay, good.
So what it is, is basically us doing our typical, it's during overtime hours, but our typical traffic enforcement. Our focus is DWIs and traffic-related safety. So our purpose is to look for these factors that are causing our serious injuries or fatalities.
Perfect.
So as long as it's on the highway and the service road, which is our zones, and then the underpasses, and we can go a little, we can branch out a little bit, then we can stop. But there's no checkpoint, no stopping, anything like that.
Good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions, or do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve of the STEP impaired driving mobilization safety grant as presented.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Item number nine, to consider the proposed amendments to the city employee handbook. I believe we're tabling that. Is that correct?
Yes, I would need a
Motion?
A motion to postpone to the next meeting, or we can take no action at all?
I'm sorry?
We would be ready for a December meeting on that. We would like to have time to consult with the attorney.
Okay. So a motion to table, please. Item number nine.
I'll make a motion to postpone the employee handbook recommended by staff.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Item number 10, to consider compensation to city employees who have exceeded 240 hours in comp time.
Counsel, I'm passing out a different sheet to you that's different than what is in your packet. It's changed a little bit, about $2,000 or less.
Did you know it's got to go in my packet?
I got it. Counsel, we've started looking at this situation several months ago. It's not anything new to the city. We've been aware of this situation for some length of time. And I say some length of time, you go back nearly 20 years on some of this. One employee for 20 years, another employee for roughly 15 years. And so this is not anything that has just happened recently. This has been an accumulation of time, comp time, over many years. And like a lot of small cities in Texas and everywhere, your staff is not small, is too small sometimes. And when, really, like the fire department, this is where we, what we started looking at, is that when your staff is small, and then you have people get sick, somebody's still got to be there at the fire department. And so they were brought in, covered, and then employees come back, and it just, it keeps building. It keeps growing because you just don't have the staff to say, okay, now you, they were getting flex time. The fire department was getting flex time. But, and a lot of times, they could take that flex time, but, or they were trying to work it out. But then the vacation, it just never could get to that point where they could take a complete three weeks or two weeks, whatever they had. And so, over many years, this has built up. And so what you have here in front of you are nine employees. So what we're trying to do, or will do, hopefully, is we want to get this back to what our employee handbook says. That's 240 hours. You may carry 240 hours over each year, and that's your anniversary date. And we're going to be looking at that situation in the future also. Do we make it anniversary day, or do we make it calendar year, or October 1, whatever. But not tonight. So that'll be a different subject in another time. But you do have nine employees here that are over, and some of them, and it's many different reasons. And down at the bottom, you have a PoliWorks employee. Well, we haven't gotten there. That goes back to February, when you had the freeze, and they were having to put in so many hours. That sort of thing was going on. And of course, your big one is the fire department. And now that we're in, going to be into a transition, we need to be looking at that because we've got to take care of all of those hours. And so we're going to have to pay it one way or another. It's got to be taken care of. And we'll be, we'll be working on that. They may keep some hours and be transferred over to ESD, but still, we'll have to pay ESD. They earned it on our time. So we will have to pay for this. So that does, that does not change. Police department is the same, like, police department is, they're working, they just don't, cannot take their time. Again, staff is your main reason here as well. So counsel, you have the names, you have, showing you what it is, how much is owed to these employees. And again, this will get it back to 240 or more. We're going down to 200 on the Snyder and Lockwood because they're not going to be able to take off for a while. These guys are in the transition, they're going to be here. So we're putting them back to 200 because they're still accruing their vacation. And then Ramirez, very similar. She's worked in cases, so we're going to put her back to 200. And I'm not too sure that we showed that right now. We didn't because she made that decision today. Nathan, down at the bottom, he's requested 20 hours, and then he will make sure that that is taken off. And when I say make sure, what we're doing is getting him back to 200 hours or 240 hours. And then, department heads, as it says in employee book, they are going to have to watch this situation, and so that we don't let it get out of hand again. And again, maybe that's the wrong word to use. You understand the reason. It wasn't anything anybody even wanted to happen. It's just to make, to keep the city going, under what condition, we had to do it. And it'll happen again. We know that. And, but we'll have to work that out. Not to say that we may have to pay again sometime. We have something, it's February two years ago, we may have to pay money again. But we're going to try to do our best to keep it at 240, and that's department heads are to watch this and to take care of it. Now, they can get over that at any time, but the department head will have to sign off on it, okay? So they'll have to have department head approval to work anything over, well, comp time or anything over 240 hours. So, as you can see, the bottom line on all these nine employees right here is 136,795.70. I can't sit here and tell you this won't change just a little bit, but this is the basic fee. But as we go through some things, one, we have one employee that said, don't pay me. I'm going to take an extended vacation. So, that's the fire department. So he will not get paid, but we're going to have to see how we're going to get him an extended vacation, okay? And that's what he's requesting. And also, out of this, you have federal and state laws that we have to go by. So we're in, I mean, there's no option in some of the, you got to pay and get this right. So, counsel, I'll be glad to answer any question.
Is the staff asking the council to approve this amount tonight?
We're asking you to approve, yes, we are. We're asking you to approve this and this amount of money tonight, and then we will, we will work with it.
And this will bring everybody, not back to zero, but back to where it should be?
Back to where it should be. That's right.
And then moving forward, we can monitor it more closely?
That's right.
Well, I mean, it's vacation. They earned it anyway.
They earned it. Some of it is comp time, vacation time. You'll see holiday time in here.
We'd have paid it then, or we pay it now?
You're going to pay. That's right. I mean, exactly, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions for Bill?
Are we talking about a one lump sum check, like, to show up in your next pay? Or are we talking, because I know that gives, that gives a huge tax hit to each one of our employees?
We pass the employees.
Okay.
And as of tonight, we have two employees that requested half of it in this year and half of it in January.
Okay. Good deal. Okay.
And we also are going to encourage, if possible, that they take time. I mean, if all possible, take some time off, and then we'll take care of the time.
Okay.
I appreciate the employees that did their job, and I understand with the fire department, the last two or three years, it's been tough, even the water department. So I appreciate those guys doing that.
Sure.
I also understand that the importance of taking time off. So hopefully, this next year, we can get things more in line, and guys can take, ladies can take time off. And it's important to get away for a while.
Right. It certainly is. But, and you're correct, Mayor. But I just want to emphasize, despite anything that happened recently, this is over a 20-year period, and so we're, that's what we're having to correct. And here we are.
That's fine. Any other questions for Bill, or do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve compensating the city employees listed that have exceeded the maximum 240 hours of vacation and compensatory time.
So the ones that want to split it up, we'll split it up for them?
We will.
Okay.
We're going to pay it in this fiscal year. But, and what we're really wanting to do is go ahead and take care of it by January. We want this, we won't be back at 240 or 200, wherever they may be.
Okay.
At the end of January.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other questions for Bill? All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Bill. Thank the department heads, thank the employees for us. Okay, we're going to executive session.
You want to do counsel? You want to do comments before we get back out?
Sure. Comments? Any counsel comments?
Thanks, everybody.
Sorry. I'm excited for the chief and the fireman for our vote this last, whenever it was.
Last Tuesday?
Last Tuesday, for what the opportunities that lie had for them. And I appreciate the chief and them helping on that, and I wish them good luck. And I know with the SD1, it'll be a smooth transition. So Chief Snyder, thank your guys and you for the help with that. And thank you for counsel and the good job that we've done this past year, you've done. So, city manager, comments?
I'll be brief. A few meetings ago, you guys authorized the creation of a city engineer position. We filled that position. We hired Gretchen Vasquez, I think, the day after. She comes from the city of Alito, previously with the city of Cleveland. She has extensive municipal knowledge. And so yesterday was her first day here, and so we look forward to getting her. In fact, she just got her desk this afternoon. Now, you can see the new furniture that came in. So we look forward to getting her up and running. I want to say happy birthday to Bill Thunderburke. Sunday was his 29th-plus birthday.
It's not worth it, yeah.
It's been a
It might have been one way to start.
I was going to say, you got something you want to say? It's been a two-day celebration of Bill's birthday here. And then, finally, I want to thank every council member and the mayor and the staff for allowing me the time to go and, I did get some questions about why I've been absent the last couple of months. My son has football games on Tuesday night, and I want to thank the council and the staff for allowing me the opportunity to be a dad for a couple of days out of the month. I really enjoy watching Zach play football, and I just thank you guys for letting me do that. Not a lot of councils would be that lenient. So I just want to publicly thank you and appreciate it.
It was tough, but we managed.
Well, here's, okay, real quick. The first meeting, Bill is up here. Every single one of you guys texted me and said, we don't ever really want you to come back. Bill got us out.
Okay.
I also, I don't know if you were going to mention it, but we do have a tree lighting for our Christmas decorations.
22nd. Yes, thank you, Leah.
This week?
November 22, 6:00 PM, we have our Willow Park First City lighting, Christmas lighting. We've got, we have photos with Santa. We have cookies and hot chocolate. We have the Willow Park tree lighting and general merriment, whatever that means. Thank you, Leah.
I heard a rumor that the Grinch was back in town and may show up.
Yes.
Okay.
That's not a nice thing to call him.
Okay, anything else?
Oh, he's got the red hair. Is he in red jacket?
Wow.
We're going into executive session.
At 6:49.
PM?
Yes, sir.
And consult to 551071, consultation with attorney, deliberation about dispute with half associates regarding the Fort Worth Water Project, and 551072, discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. Could everyone vacate the premises, please?
I'd really start at 7:00.
Okay, we're up.
Okay, thank you. We're coming out executive session at 7:28 PM. And thanks, everyone, again, for your help. Do we have a motion to adjourn, please?
I move adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Irene.